Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's candidate forum for the Akron Public School Board of Education. I'm Andrew Green, Voter Services Chair for Programs and Information for the League of Women Voters of the Akron area. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. Underlying all our work is the desire to preserve and protect democracy. This forum represents the collective efforts of our cosponsors, all of which are nonpartisan organizations like the League, and do not endorse or advocate for political candidates. The cosponsors are the Akron NAACP, the National Pan-Hellenic Council of Greater Akron, and the National Sosority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated. I'd now like to turn it over to Allison Ivey, who's got a few remarks to make as well.
Thank you. On behalf of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, one of the sponsoring organizations for tonight's forum, I'd like to say welcome. Also, thank you for joining us. We're pleased to provide this opportunity for our community to hear directly from the candidates for the Akron School Board. These are the people who will shape the future of our students and our schools. So, we appreciate your time, your commitment, and your presence to become an informed voter.
And at this time, we will go ahead and get started and turn it over to our moderators. Moderating this evening, we have Carla Davis, immediate past president of the Akron Press Club and president of Carla Davis Communications. In joining her, we have Sky Richards, student-scholar moderator, a senior at Akron Early College. And I will turn it over to our moderators.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Allison. So, on behalf of myself, welcome again. My name is Carla Davis, and yes, I will be your moderator this evening. I'd like to also introduce you to Sky, who is our student moderator for this evening. So, again, welcome to all of you. Before we begin, I'm going to do just a few little housekeeping things. Just in case you need the restrooms, they're out the back of the auditorium and to the right. Now, before we begin, I will read the forum rules that all candidates and audience members are expected to follow. So, please listen carefully. All candidates who have qualified for the ballot have been invited to participate. No audio or video recording of the forum is permitted, except for the official recording by the League of Women Voters or credentialed media. The official recording will be made available online shortly after the forum. By participating, candidates agree not to use the recording for campaign purposes and not to share any part of the recording unless sharing the entirety of the recording. Inside the auditorium, candidates and audience members are prohibited from wearing, displaying, or distributing campaign materials, including but not limited to flyers, buttons, t-shirts, and hats. Thank you for your cooperation. Outside the auditorium, candidates will each be provided space at a shared table to distribute campaign materials. The first few questions have been prepared in advance by the moderator, and also, they have been vetted by our committee. Additional questions will be accepted from the audience via handwritten note cards or an electronic submission form. I don't know if we're doing an electronic form tonight. Okay, just making sure. All right, thank you. All audience questions will be screened by League of Women Voters volunteers for the sole purpose of eliminating duplicate or inappropriate questions before being passed along to me. At the beginning of the forum, each candidate will be given up to two minutes to give an opening statement. Each candidate will then have up to one minute to answer each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given up to two minutes to give a closing statement. This event is a forum, not a debate. Candidates shall refrain from addressing one another directly, and there will be no opportunity for rebuttal. So, we appreciate everyone's cooperation so the forum is fair, respectful, and informative. With that, we'll begin with opening statements. And also, I want you to know that we do have timekeepers that are here in the audience. Okay? Can everybody see the timekeepers? All right, wanted to make sure that that was good. All right. So, at this time, we're going to invite the first candidate to begin, and we're going to start in alphabetical order with Diana Autry. And Phil Montgomery, who is sitting on the end, will be the last. So, we're going to go in that order, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you to the sponsors. My name is Diana Autry. I'm going to tell you a little bit about me because I think it's important to know what brought me here, and it's important to know what candidates were doing prior to this seat. And so, I am a proud graduate. I am a mother. I am a grandmother. And I have been a registered nurse for the last 28 years, working the last 23 at Akron Children's Hospital. I have dedicated over 15,000 volunteer hours for the Akron Public Schools as a PTA leader at Buckto and for the Akron Council of PTAs. This is not a stepping stone for me, nor is it a political whim. It is very important to know what folks were doing prior to coming to this seat. I'm also a proud member of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated. I was appointed to the Akron School Board in 2020, and I was elected in 2021. I am the most experienced candidate on this ballot. And I say that not because I think I know everything, but I am humble enough to know that I am a lifelong learner, and there's always much to learn. I have served on all of the board's committees. I have served as vice president and president. I stepped into leadership when leadership wasn't easy. Sometimes I had to stand alone, and one example is that, is when this district needed a levy. I had leaders, professionals from this community who told me no, who told me every reason that didn't have to do with children. And so, when they said no, I said yes. And I thank the 60% of this community who saw beyond the headlines and said yes to our children. And so, here I am asking for a second term because one is not enough for the impact that I would like to have on this district. And so, I would ask for your consideration for a second term. I am Diana Autry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Blake, and I would like to say thank you for hosting this forum tonight. A disclaimer, I am a member of Delta Sigma Theta. Thank you, Sorority Sisters. I am four generations of attending the Akron Public School System. My mother, myself, my children, I had a daughter graduate, and I have three grandchildren currently in Akron Public School System. My late father, Mr. William Blake, he taught math at Thornton Junior High, as well as an administrator at South High School and Garfield. I'm a second-generation proud PTA mother and was a strong PTA mother in the Buckto Cluster. I belong to various organizations that help raise money for scholarships, and I work with the youth through Tire Town, through Parent Peewee. I have a background in finance from 30 to 35 years of doing mortgage loans throughout the community and small business loans for minorities. I have helped build this community by helping over 1,000 families become homeowners in this city. I'm running for the school board because we need to think of ways of how to reimage K through 12. I'm very concerned about the finances and asset control. I'm very concerned about the policies that are going to be written. We really need to take a deep dive and be concerned about what is going on at APS as we get ready to shape our future. So, I am humbly asking you to consider voting for me. Again, and my name is Cynthia Blake. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Gwen Bryant, and I'm running for school board. And I want to thank the organizations who put together this forum. So, a little bit in a nutshell about me is that I was a parent of a student who went to Akron Public Schools. I graduated from the University of Akron with a degree in early childhood, and then I also have a master's in education with a focus of early childhood. I taught in Akron for over 30 years, and as that, most of it was as a kindergarten teacher. I then left the classroom and became an instructional coach. That's someone who comes out of the classroom and helps to provide and focus and mentor teachers on effective instruction. From that, I became a district coach where I worked through strategic planning and helping to usher through 15 schools to come up with a strategic plan. When I left Akron 14 years ago, I was offered a great opportunity to become a consultant for a company with the focus of instruction. And with that, with that experience I had, I've traveled over 47 of the 50 states. And in that, I've impacted schools on instruction over 500 schools, both within the United, 500 school districts within the, within the United States and also in Canada and in the UK. The benefits of being a national consultant is that you have the perspectives of what happens locally and also nationally. You see trends, you can spot patterns, and you can make decisions both on policy and also what goes on nationally. It also provides you a network of educators that I could touch within the country to know. So, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this forum, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Gregory Harrison. I'm running for Akron School Board. I believe I can be an asset to the school board. I am a United States Army veteran. I am a retired police officer. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Emergency Management, and I am a large, a huge advocate in this community. School board members sets the district's vision. They hire the superintendent and the treasurer. We review policies. We enact policies. And our job is to make sure that the district is fiscally responsible with resources, capital resources, and human resources. I believe that I can be an asset to the Akron School Board because we have got to reimagine education in a different way. We've got to be more fiscally responsible in our district with the funds that we have. And we have to protect the funding that we have from the state, from voucher systems, and we have to protect our kids from extremist organizations such as Moms for Liberty. I believe now, when we start to talk about banning books, when we start to talk about the test scores of our students, and we focus on the good things, but we leave out the things that we have to manage. We have to manage literacy better. We have to give our kids a future, and I'm willing to do that. I'm also big on transparency. I believe that we are a public school district, and being a public school district, every decision we make should involve the public. So, I'm asking for your vote, Gregory Harrison, for Akron School Board. Transparency, fiscal responsibility, and literacy. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for this opportunity. I am Dr. Carla Jackson. I was born and raised in Akron, Ohio. Attended Akron Public Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, graduating from Garfield High School. I am a licensed teacher, secondary grade seven, 12th, as well as a licensed administrator, all licensed in the state of Ohio. I have been professionally trained to be an educator and an administrator, and I am also credentialed to evaluate principals. I bring up all these credentials because I believe they're important in the educational space. I don't have to speak about theoretical framework or what I think I might do in this space because, as candidate Autry has stated, the real question is what were people doing before they came into this seat? I was already in the trenches, serving both private school students and public school students. Parents called me to ask about scholarships, to ask policy questions when they ran into problems in Akron Public Schools before I was ever even affiliated with Akron Public Schools. I've been an advocate, an advocate for students, and I support teachers. I understand what it's like to be in a classroom and to struggle through classroom management, and then how that impacts a student through discipline because the teacher has no classroom management. I know what it's like to be an excellent teacher in a classroom and then not be supported by administration when it comes to discipline. You may hear a lot of things, a lot of rhetoric. You hear things about vouchers, and you'll hear things about charter schools. Let me make it very plain. I am for the people, not the systems. I support the student. I support the students in the public school system that may not have an advocate that can sign them out or to apply for vouchers, that may not be able to open enroll, but they need the informed intellect when they sit around the table, not someone that's tapped or worried about endorsements. So, I'm Carla Jackson, and I ask for your support to continue the work. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Gerose, and I'm running for the Akron Public School Board because I love Akron. You see, for a community to thrive, we must have a thriving public education system. For the past eight years, I have worked directly with staff, teachers, and students through my nonprofit organization, Light Leadership Influencing Teen Empowerment, serving over 5,000 students, equipping them with leadership development skills, emotional intelligence, conflict management, and other essential life skills. I've seen the impact that that program has had, where new students realize a new level of confidence in themselves, but I've also seen the challenges that make learning difficult. My own personal academic journey also continues, where I do have a master's in organizational leadership, but I'm also pursuing a doctor of education in interprofessional leadership from Kent State University. And the entire premise of that degree is about how there are professionals from all different backgrounds and walks of life but working collectively together to solve community problems. We know that it takes a village to raise a child. That is not just a school district, but involves our parents. It involves our teachers. It involves our nonprofits and businesses, all working together to make sure that from kindergarten all the way through graduation, that our students have the best opportunities in front of them. And one of the best indicators of a healthy school district is ensuring that we have quality teachers right there on the front lines, getting the support they deserve. Just recently, we saw the article from the Akron Beacon where out of all, about the entire state of Ohio, there were awards given out for excellence in teaching and innovation, and Akron Public School teachers had, two-thirds of the entire state went to Akron Public Schools. We have amazing educators, and they should be celebrated. And that's one reason why I'm so proud to have the Akron Education Association endorsement, being supported by teachers, because I know that I will have their back because I see the work they do on a day-to-day basis.
Good evening. My name is Carmen A. Kelly, and I am running for Akron Public School Board simply because I cannot turn a blind eye to the cry that this community expressed when asking for a new school board member. This community has asked for someone younger to run with a fresh perspective and has the best interest of their children. I've served nearly 20 years in this community as a volunteer, volunteering with your family members, your children, APS students who face socioeconomic barriers, the absence of a guardian in their home, the absence of a parent, and sometimes students who relied on foster care service to provide them with proper parental, parental care. It was their stories that kept me motivated as I was circulating my petitions in this community so that I could be certified to be on this ballot on November 4th. It is not only important to me, but I know it's important to this community that you have somebody that not only represents you, but represents this district and its children on our school board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Phil Montgomery, and I'm running for the Akron School Board first and foremost because I have skin in the game. Both of my daughters attend Akron Public Schools. They have since the beginning in kindergarten. And I want to make sure that we can provide a parental lens on the operations of the district as we supervise the superintendent and the treasurer, and we provide those guardrails or the policies that dictate what the vision of the district is and how the superintendent needs to operate to achieve that. What I bring to the table is an MBA from Ohio Dominican University. I also hold a school treasurer's license from the Ohio Board of Education. And in my day job as the Director of Finance and Budget for Seminole County, I oversee an over $700 million operating budget, which is about $100 million more than Akron Public Schools. So, I get how government works. I get how government budgeting works and how to allocate, allocate resources equitably across varying organizations' operations within the global government scheme. I want to make sure that we're expanding access to our community learning centers and getting out there in the community to open those spaces up. And that's critical in our partnerships with our out-of-school-time providers that work with our youth outside of school time, in the evenings, on the weekends, in the summer, with a summer youth employment program. At Seminole County, I've worked with those providers to do summer youth employment, where we've employed hundreds of our youth to keep them occupied over the summer. We know that when some of our youth have downtime, they have opportunities to do things that maybe aren't in their best interest and making sure that they are provided opportunities to have the right academic achievement. We need to continue to expand our college and career academies. It's the college and career academies. Not everybody goes to college academies. So, we need to make sure that our students are ready for employment or ready for enrollment into colleges when they graduate from Akron Public Schools. We need to additionally continue to look at our family resource centers, which allow us to look at the whole student, the families, and the educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much, candidates. I appreciate you staying within the time limits. Thank you very much. And thank you, audience, for your attentiveness. At this time, we will move into the prepared questions segment of this community forum. So, I, as the moderator, I will read each prepared question. And again, each candidate has up to one minute to respond. I will be rotating the speaking order so that the questions don't go always in the same order so that we can break that up a little bit, and everyone has a fair chance, okay? So, at this time, I'm going to start with question number one. Educational experience. And I'll ask Cynthia if you would be prepared to, to answer this, and then we'll go down all the way and then come back to Ms. Autry. Is that fine?
Okay.
At this time. Here's a question that each one of you will answer. What experiences in education, and specifically with Akron Public Schools, have best prepared you to serve on the Akron Board of Education? And how do those experiences shape your perspective as a candidate? What experiences in education, and specifically with Akron Public Schools, have best prepared you to serve on the Akron Board of Education? And tell us how those experiences have shaped your perspective as a candidate. And I will repeat the question as we go down the line, if you need it. Thank you.
Okay. My life experiences have been education. I have attended the University of Akron, and yes, I do have an associate degree in business management. I graduated from Springfield Local School. My background from being an advocate in our community, as well as in the community lending finance arena, has prepared me for this position to be on the school board. I have also been a property manager, so my work skills and business skills have helped prepare me to take the seat at the table, as well as my compassion that I have to work for the children. That is the experience that I bring to the Akron Public School System, as well as the education. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
Okay. Well, I started this journey when I was grad, when I graduated from Akron, when I graduated from Akron U. I chose to be an educator, knew I was going to be one, starting probably when I was in elementary school. So, education has always been a part of what I do. So, with 30 years of experience in APS, when I left 14 years ago, look, I probably know probably 40% of the staff that, when I left, that's still here. So, my benefit would not be, not have, well, I can have relationships with people right away because I know them. The benefit is I know the system because I spent most of my time here, starting from a classroom teacher all the way up to central office and working within the state policies and things that affected Akron. So, Akron Public Schools, I know it. If I don't know anything else, I know about Akron Public Schools.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, absolutely. What experiences in education, and specifically with Akron Public Schools, have best prepared you to serve on the Akron School Board? And how do those experiences shape your perspective as a candidate?
Thank you.
I'm a graduate of Akron Public Schools. I graduated from Garfield High School in 1983. I also went to Grace Middle School. That was closed. I was, should have went to West Junior High. That was closed. I should have went to South High School. That was closed. I am a product of bussy. I am a product of inequitable treatment in this community. But as I graduated, and I have a son who has an IEP, he had an IEP, and he was not getting the services that he needed. Also, in 2015, my godson was shot and killed by a 15-year-old who could not read. So, in 2015, I have been going down to school board meetings, and the question is, why do we have a 15-year-old who could not read? I've watched buzzards. I've listened to the meetings. My experiences of Akron Public School have been both good and bad, and I think those things helped me. I am not an educator, but I also am proud to say that I am endorsed by 2,700 educators in Akron Public Schools.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt the, the questioning here. I need to repeat that there is no recording tonight. There's an official recording being done by the League of Women Voters, so we would ask you to please respect that rule. If you're in the audience, please govern yourself. Thank you very much. I apologize. Ms. Jackson, do you need the question again?
I know. I know. Thank you. My experience, as I stated, I am a licensed teacher. But when I began my journey, I taught American Government and American History in Eller High School, which was a part of Akron Public Schools. I'm also a product of Akron Public Schools. And what I saw was various disparities. I know what happens when a school system underserves students. I've seen what happened in my peer group. I've seen what happened with my siblings. And as a history teacher at Eller, I've seen what happened with students. I saw the disparities in discipline. I saw students not being served to the full capacity. And as Ms. Jackson and the community, serving all students, I saw how a failure to intervene in the life of students or a failure for a teacher to provide the environment, the academic excellent environment that students need, changed their, changed their entire lives and leads them to not earning the income that they would be capable to earn and not feeling empowered to graduate and be have successful careers.
Thank you. Mr. Gerose?
The most important part of education is creating lifelong learners. My mom had a phrase growing up that said, "You first have to learn to read, then you read to learn, and then you learn to learn." And so, throughout my life, I was, as a 12-year-old, giving 45-minute speeches and presentations on team development and conflict management, and that has continued throughout my entire life. And I saw the value in education, pursuing a master's degree, now pursuing a doctorate, as well as getting a, my teacher's license, a substitute teacher's license, where I've been substitute teaching as well. And so, when we look at the essence of education and leadership, they're very intertwined because both of them are about people, adding value to the lives of others, and really understanding that not everyone starts off from the same starting point. And it's important to have that understanding of how people work, how to influence other people for the better, whether in leadership or education. And through my experience, I've been able to see both sides of leadership and education.
Thank you. Mr. Montgomery? No, I'm sorry. Ms. Kelly?
Ms. Davis, could you repeat the question, please?
Absolutely. What experiences in education, and specifically... What experiences in education, and specifically with Akron Public Schools, have best prepared you to serve on the Akron Board of Education? And how do those experiences shape your perspective as a candidate? Please silence your phone. Thank you.
I've had the privilege of helping families navigate through their prenatal and postnatal care and working with them and their children up until the age of seven years old. It was during that time that I realized how significant social readiness and education, educational readiness is. Because without those two foundations, it is very challenging for children to be able to show up for as themselves and to learn and retain information in classrooms. The teacher can be the best teacher in the world, but without that child having those fundamental skills, they will struggle in the classroom. My experience with Akron Public Schools is that the children that I have mentored for almost 20 years have struggled in these exact same areas that I know from personal experience is essential for them to properly develop once they enter kindergarten. That is the experience that I have, and that is the reason why I'm running for Akron Public School Board.
Thank you. Now we'll move to Mr. Montgomery.
So my educational experience with Akron Public Schools is through my children as a parent and making sure that what they're experiencing in the classroom and in the community are addressed by the board and the district. And how that has shaped my perspective is watching the school board over the last eight years that my children have been there and what has been happening either behind closed doors or happening without public input or happening and being voted on right before it's presented to the board. So making sure that decisions that are made on the board are communicated back to the community, involve the parents, involve the educators, and making sure that we're making a collaborative and collective decision that is going to best impact our district and how we move it forward. So having that parental lens in the education space has been critical for me to make sure that I'm a part of my children's education and that I can bring that to the board. Because again, we're not the educators. We're not there to micromanage. We're there to set the vision for the district and work with the superintendent and the treasurer to achieve that vision.
Thank you. And now Ms. Autry.
Thank you. Personally, I mentioned already, I graduated from the St. Thomas School of Nursing with my RAN credentials, the University of Cincinnati with my Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. Of course, my children are the easy thing to point to in terms of my experience with education, which is why my entire nursing career, the last 28 years, I worked part-time so that I could be involved in their personal education. But it's not just about my personal kids, it's about all of our kids in the community. 15,000 hours of volunteer service at Akron Public Schools. I had an office at BooktoPTA so that I could listen to parents, to families, to students. The important key word is listen. That's what helps informs my decisions. As a board member, I have visited every single school in this district, some of them more than once, again, to listen, to make sure that the policies that the board develops are working for them. It's important to listen, and these are the things that inform my decision-making and my educational impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for answering question number one. Now we'll move on to question number two. The topic is funding. Funding. And here's the question, and we'll start with Ms. Bryant as we continue to move, to move left. All right. The district faces major financial challenges in the coming years. How would you approach funding decisions to ensure fiscal responsibility, community involvement, and positive student outcomes?
It's like I would approach any major decision. I would start off with data, because data is very important. So I'm glad the question was about a specific thing, because that would be foolish for me to respond to something without data in front of me. But it would be about data. Then also looking at, because you can't just go through cut, 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 because a lot of those things, those cuts will impact other things. With my experience and knowing about what impacts schools, I would know, okay, just because this program may have more money to spend in it, it may impact these other factors as I go along with it. I would also look at listening and finding out what would impact each of the schools and talk to teachers and talk to parents and talk to students. So it would be like I would do with anything, even in my life. I look at data. I weigh decisions based on that, and based on that weight on those alternatives that I have, then coming up with that conclusion and making an informed decision.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yes, absolutely. The district faces major financial challenges in the coming years. How would you approach funding decisions to ensure fiscal responsibility, community involvement, and positive student outcomes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we have to look at functionality of our district and the personnel in it. 83% of the school's budget is personnel. So we need to make sure that we have the right people in the right places, and we need to make sure that we're not building systems around people who should not be there. We need to make sure that every decision we make is transparent, and we have not only thoughtfully looked at the decisions, but we need to look at intended consequences and unintended consequences of decisions that we've made. We ask the public for money, and I think that the district has this financial challenge that we're facing. We need to really be more open about some of the decisions we make, and we need to be more thoughtful with the decisions. Some of the ideals of the Finance Committee, we need to invite the community in. We need to look and ask our community partners. Maybe they want to do this, but maybe we need them to do something else. So I think it's about taking in the information and asking the right questions.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I too agree with data-driven decision-making, and part of that is looking at the resources that we have and what is depleting them the most and how we can save. We do understand that we need teachers. Teachers are one of the most important parts of an academic institution, so we need to do whatever we can to preserve cuts near the classroom. But we also, like now, we're going through a performance audit to see where we can save money. Additionally, I believe we need to leverage our community relationships and our business partnerships and to see, think about innovative ways to generate income. Also, we need to look at the service that we're providing and how our customers feel about that, because education is still a service. So when you look at a shrinking population within the city and you look at students who are leaving the district and why they are leaving, then we need to see how can we mitigate the risk of not having enough students and not being able to make budget. The per people amount for the public schools are a little over $22,000. And so, oh, my time is up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I appreciate it. Mr. Giroux?
So in this instance, we want to make sure that we rely on our experts. And as a board, we hire two positions, the superintendent and the treasurer. And so with the treasurer, I would encourage our treasurer to provide a budget that prioritizes dollars into the classrooms, as well as expand opportunities with community partners. When we get less funding, that's where we have to rely on the village that is the Akron community. But we also have to realize the difficult situation we are in and the unfair situation we are in and advocate to our state legislatures, our governor, to properly fund our schools. They want us to do more with less. They want us to work with our students but take away their resources. With the fair school funding, there should be millions of dollars more coming to our district than it is. And vouchers are a problem when it comes to taking funding that belongs to our Akron Public School students and gives them to private interests. We had about 2,200 students, according to the Signal Akron article last year, use the voucher program. Vouchers might take $6,000 to $8,000 per student, and that's costly to our district.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
We do have two employees on our school board, and that is the superintendent and the treasurer. It is important for us to lean more on our treasurer and trust that he is making the best decisions for our district with our support and also leaning onto the Finance Committee and working collectively and not challenging each other on the decisions that we have to make as a school board, which means that we have to be aware of what's going on at a federal level, at a state level, and at a local level, because if we don't, we will continue to lose money. We will continue to lose money. Money from the school voucher program, money from the federal government, grants that we need to continue to protect our career pathway programs. It is important that we work together as a board to protect these assets, because if we don't, we will lose out on the opportunity to properly educate our students and provide resources for our teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Montgomery?
So I've been talking a lot about community involvement and being out in the community to ask the perspective and the needs that the community wants to see to achieve the academic success we need for our students. So continuing to be out there, asking the tough questions, to be able to take that back into the boardroom and apply that when we look at the budget. There needs to be a top-down review of the current budget. It's been mentioned that we were very fortunate in our community for them to pass a sales tax, property tax, with 57% of the vote, but it wasn't enough money. And it wasn't enough money because we didn't ask for enough money, and we weren't listening to what was proposed by the experts of what we needed to get through the five-year forecast. As we look at what is happening in the state legislature, there's a direct attack on public education through the proposed elimination of inside millage, which is part of property taxes, which is what we have to do to fund school districts, because the fair funding plan is not being fully executed and being dared by the state, which is their constitutional responsibility. The county and the team I'm on, we responded by putting out issue two, which is a way to protect ourselves, and I will continue to do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So as I was out in the community lobbying for the levy last fall, I shared with every community group that I encountered that we would need to come back, because the average levy cycle for a school is about five years. We went 12 years without asking for money. So that was my way of trying to inform and engage. I think we need to continue to do that because there are important partners in that. And also, if you are concerned truly about historically our challenges here, one of the recommendations out of the transition report that I encourage everyone to read is that we consider forming a foundation that can focus solely on creative ways to raise funds. And I don't think that the board and district has been irresponsible. I think public education is actually being financially sabotaged, and we need to acknowledge that. I know we're the easy targets, but we need to acknowledge what the real challenges are. And so I would be a proponent of a creative way to raise money through a foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Yes?
Well, we definitely know it's easy to always cut, but when it comes to funding, we need to think of creative ways. I have made a suggestion that with the new buildings that are being built, North High, over at North High School in Pfeiffer and Miller South, they should try to sell the naming rights of the auditorium, you know, something like the Cleveland Browns when they sell the stadium. Sell the chairs in there to the alumni or the neighborhood or businesses that are in the area. That's just ways of trying to be creative of what I mean. We have to think of ways to generate revenue other than the property taxes, because I'm from the vulnerable area of Ward Three where our income is $30,000 or less, and we're helping sustain a workforce of 45% that doesn't live in our city. That means they don't have to pay taxes. There's no disposable income coming into the city. So when we had a suggestion for free tutoring to give a resource, it had to be rescinded. So it's like when we're thinking of things for all students. Okay, I have to stop.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So thank you, candidates, for answering that round of questions. At this time, we're going to welcome Sky Richards, student moderator, who will ask the next question. Question number three is on safety, security, SROs. So please welcome Sky. Thank you.
Thank you. The question is, what is-- sorry. Thank you. The question is, what is your perspective on school safety, including the role of school resources, resource officers, and how would you balance safety with creating a welcoming environment for your students?
I didn't like to hurt the idea.
No, we just wanted to start with.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Mr. Yes.
Thank you. As a retired police officer, I was a school resource officer for a number of years. I think the relationship between the students and our police officers is a critical relationship, and it serves a great purpose. We have to really look at what's happening in the community first. And as we look at the safety of the schools, it can't be in a silo that we look at them. The school resource officers serve a very important role in our community and in our schools, but we also want to make sure that we have some control, some restraints on their abilities and what they will, how they interact with our students. I think the safety is a concern outside of school resource officers, but my personal belief is that school resource officers are very important, not only in the safety of the schools, but also in the community. A lot of times, things happen in the schools. The first person that a student who has a relationship with a school resource officer, he or she will inform the school resource officer. So I think that they're important, and we need them in our schools. We just have to make sure we monitor.
Could you repeat the question, please? What is your perspective on school safety, including the role of school resource officers, and how would you balance safety with creating a welcoming environment for students?
My perspective on school safety is that it is vital to everything else that we say we desire. If students do not feel safe within their academic environment, then they won't thrive academically, which is one of the main reasons why many parents have concerns about sending their children to certain schools. I believe that student resource officers, as well as police officers, are important because relationships matter. So they're important only if they have relationships and can connect with the students. If they have relationships with the students, as been stated, then the students will keep them informed. I was in a, I was going to a school, going through a school when they had a middle school student, and I recognized some behaviors of the student that seemed like, you know, something could have been off. And later, one of my other students said, "Oh, Ms. J, you know, he was, he ate, he had an edible." And he eats edibles because he was worried about, he'd rather be the high, funny dude than ask what set he was with and worried about getting hit in the face or chin check because of something like that. So it's very important to have those type of relationships and connections in our schools so that we know what the problems are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Giroux?
So the primary role of our SROs is to make sure that we protect our students from outside threats. So we live in the wild, wild Midwest, one of the states with one of the worst gun laws in our nation, and there are school shootings that happen almost every other week in this country. We want to make sure that our students are safe and protected from those threats. And it's important that we're protected from outside threats and that our students don't feel like they themselves are being policed. Our SROs need to remember that these are children. These are kids. These are youth. They're not criminals. And sometimes SROs may go too far, and we need to ensure that our SROs are held accountable if they do, because we want our students to feel like they can thrive in this environment and not have to look over their shoulder if they're safe or not by the ones who are there to protect them. So we also want to make sure that SROs are not the, are not the first call, but rather the last resort on any internal conflicts. There are counselors. There are mediators. There are safety team members. There are teachers that could settle the conflict first before going to the SRO that might escalate the situation.
Thank you.
There's no secret that the amount of force that's being used in our public schools have become a concern, not only to this community, but to our educators. I walk in a public school every Monday during the school year, and it is a feeling, the feeling that I have, you cannot get used to it. It makes me think about how our students and teachers perhaps might experience secondhand trauma in this environment and also the adverse childhood experience that some of our students, if not half of them, most of them, experience in their lives because of the environments that they come from. I believe that this contract is for two years. Time will tell how effective it is, and I do look forward to if this contract does not meet the needs of protecting our educators and our students, I am up for a challenge to continue to work with our school resource officers and our board members to make sure that the next contract protects our students and teachers.
So I also believe in supporting our school resource officers. I think they're an asset to the community. I think they're a protection to our students. My daughters love their school resource officer, Officer Had Baffney. We know his name. We get to talk to him every time we walk into the school. But it's not the only tool that we need to make sure that But it's not the only tool that we need to make sure that we're providing a safe environment. It's just like the family resource centers. We have to look at the whole student, the whole family, and what does that take to make them feel safe? So we need to assess whether there's some, there are some additional methods that we can take with our security teams and with our educators and our principals and work through what it is holistically that is going to make the student feel safe, that it's going to make the parents feel safe dropping their kids there to be educated, and look at what it's going to take to put that whole thing. Because if they don't feel safe, their learning perspective is going to change, and they're going to struggle. And we need to make sure, again, that we're looking at the whole student and bringing it all together.
Thank you. So although it pains me, I listen and voted in favor of what the teachers and staff ask and how to say the middle of the teachers, the bank standards, the younger banks. I heard some students who say they feel like they weren't prepared. And I can hope the schools are probably among the last of the big urban districts to even have those measures in place. So I did support that although it did pain. Also, in terms of our SROs, the police officers, and this is respectfully, I understand they have a hard job, but their job is not to educate children. And so I value what they bring to our district. However, I do believe in expanding our safety team members who have existing relationships with our students, many of them who live right in our community. So when they see these folks, I think they feel more comfortable. They feel more safe. Most safety team members do not get the pay they deserve. I think it's $20 an hour, while our SROs make $55 an hour. They're there to enforce laws. Safety team members are due to help and build relationships with students.
I'm going to say social media. I wish for security purposes, we could do some prevention things. You know that kids be beefing on social media, so contact the principal and let him know to probably look out for certain situations. But getting back to the SRO situation, as well as the safety teams, we need to try to use all areas to help the children feel safe in their environment. I know it's, it, there, it's been a lot of talk about, I guess, recent incidents that have paid their place, you know, in media, but the principal is supposed to really be over her building. And she should, he or she should, should be able to say who needs to leave their building and who does not need to leave their building. But it's my understanding that the situation was that the SRO had to wait for their commander because they weren't allowed to leave the building on a specific situation. But my thought is, we should use every area we can as far as safety teams and SROs to keep the children safe.
Thank you.
There is no one-stop shop on how to do this work, so I would share with you what I really live. When I was at Perkins Middle School, we first got there as a team, there was one eighth grader who passed the state test. By the time we left, it was 46% of the eighth graders who passed the math test. Part of that was that the team of teachers, administrators, and leadership were proactive, knowing what goes outside those schools happens into those schools every day. So when you know the parents, you know the neighborhood, you know where the problems are, you check social media to see what's going on. You'll be preventive and be proactive to keep things where it's safe and we can have safe conditions for students to learn. So we changed that at Perkins to make it where now that safe conditions impact the student achievement. So I, it was a situation I lived. Yes, we have the, the, the safety officers, but the other part was using all the resources we had as a team approach to make that school safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, candidates, for answering those questions that we have prepared. Now we are community, and so at this time, we're going to move to questions from the audience. These questions were screened by our volunteers. And so if you're ready, if you need to take a little sip of water, ready to start, keep going? Okay. At this time, we're going to start with Ms. Jackson. First question from the audience. What policy would you look to write or change and implement when or if a necessary, and why?
I talked about this earlier in my time as a board member, but I would like to implement a stronger parent-student grievance policy. And what I mean by that is often you hear parents, or when they come to the board or they believe they're coming to the board and they believe their child has been referred or getting expelled, they think that they're seeing the elected officials, the seven that we're aware. And so what you find is when you talk to people, that there's a pattern of certain behaviors in certain buildings, and some students can name specific teachers of this pattern. And sometimes you hear years of patterns. So I think we need a policy where parents and students, where it's a centralized system, where parents and students can state these grievances and these issues or these concerns they have so that if we need to go back to retrieve information, that we can see directly and make connections with this data of patterns of certain behaviors within buildings and how discipline are rendered for various students within buildings and throughout the district. So a more student-family voice policy reporting system. Thank you.
Hard to narrow down just one, but in a recent conversation with an organization, they asked about any AI policy that our district has, and I was unaware of one. And as we look to the future of education, we also have to keep up with our policies as a school board to see the challenges that lay ahead. I'm one of two candidates running in this race who graduated in this century. And that's why it's so important. The 21st century, the 21st century. And it's, and I don't know if I lost my time on that, but... Reclaiming the time. Focusing on making sure that we are taking on the current 21st century challenges like artificial intelligence, which can be a wonderful resource when used appropriately, but can also derail learning if used to cheat or to do assignments for students. So I think we need to have a very clear policy on how to proceed as a district to ensure that our students are still getting the quality learning that they deserve.
I'm the other person who's graduated in this.
It's important to me to create policy that will strengthen the policies that already exist to provide support for our parents or guardians who students suffer from unique, not suffer, but who experience unique ways that they learn. That was something that was afforded to me as a student at the Akron Public School Board, was that my mother was afforded not only these services, but the assistance and the resources that was, that I needed as a student. It is important to me to make sure that I am creating those exact same opportunities for the students that rely on this district. And that might look like preparing them for a career that they gain experience following our career pathway programs. And that won't be afforded to them if those programs no longer exist. So protecting those policies that advocate for our students with unique learning styles and also protecting the career pathway programs that we offer our students.
First, please let the record reflect, I graduated in 2000, so technically, technically, there are three. But my opponent's youth and inexperience, as Ronald Reagan once said. All joking aside, the policies all need to be reviewed. Right now, I think we see that these board meetings are going four and five hours long, and a lot of that is self-inflicted by policies that have been implemented that really should be in the perspective of the superintendent and making sure that the board is making the decisions that are there that set the vision for the superintendent to achieve, and then use those policies or guardrails to rein them in. So I want to start by looing a top-down approach of reviewing them all. I don't, I haven't read them all. I've read some. There are a lot of them, and we got to make sure that we do a thorough review. So I can't say today specifically which one I would rewrite or remove. And looking through what we go through moving forward will take place as I sit on the board and make sure that I know what's going on in the room as the decisions are being made, and we can guide policy from there.
Thank you. So I heard that one of the policies that I've actually brought forth is not complete just yet, is a posthumous honorary policy. Fortunately, at Akron Public Schools, we've lost many students with violence and chronic illnesses, some just to no fault of their own. The reason why is because the community brought forth this concern, and so I thought that that is worthy of a policy developing in that period. So that's something I'm looking forward to making sure happens for our students because many of them have lost their lives, and they were on track to graduate from Akron Public Schools, and their families would like to see their pride. Also, I think you need a policy around non-mis complaints. That's one thing I've been getting worried with since I've been on this board, and if we don't have a, a form way of how we're dealing with the non-mis complaints, I think it's not healthy for a district. We need to have a way of a rest policy. Thank you.
Thank you. I would call a funder asset management, which is probably a fault of under the treasurer. We know, we know our treasurers can't manage the money and spend the money, but we need some type of financial controls in place. You hear about alarms, flash, we kind of think walking out of the, you know, if it gets certain, if it slows, the shortfall, and all we can supply. And this is not our content to the treasurer that just stepped into the position, but it needs to be something, and there's something missing from the business fair office to the treasurer's office. A lot of persons don't get asked at the treasurer during meetings, so we just really don't now. But also not for policy, but for doing the school agenda, I would strongly make a recommendation to add support to take away school reflection. If you watch our meetings, it's weaponized and not anything being discussed what it's supposed to be for is children. And it messes up the tone of what the superintendent needs to talk about during meetings. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just one take, one little take. But just one, one of the things I'd like to do is really make a practice now, and it could turn into a policy. I know that my son was first diagnosed with dyslexia, and I didn't know much about the laws, even though I was an educator, but my spec, my background was not in special ed. And I went and researched and talked to doctors and everything. So when his IP came about to write it, I was very informed of what could go in it because there's really a partnership between the school and the parent. But also, kind of, a parent doesn't know all the things that could be in an IP. I have a sort of a practice where there is an advocate with the parent when they attend the IEP so that that advocate who is informed can help guide that parent to make that an informed IP. An IP is an individual educational plan for kids with special needs. And as a result of that, so I actually have done it many times for parents because of my background in doing that, but I would like to make that more of a constant practice, and it could turn into a policy. Thank you.
Akron Public Schools currently does not have an equity policy. That would be one of the first things that I would work on. We have a budget of $570 million. We have a school district with over 4,500 employees. We have 19,000 students. I believe everything begins with equity. We may not want to call it DEI, but fairness is fair and giving people what they need. If we spend $114 per day on a student, is that something, is the students getting everything that they need everywhere? We can drive through the city. We can look at all of the school buildings, and we can see that there's no equity in how buildings were built, the resources that have been provided to different schools, the teachers that are in certain buildings. So I would look at an equity policy. We are too large of a district not to have an equity policy in place.
Well, I think the very first thing there is making sure that the policies that we do have in place, about making sure that every student is treated fairly, that they have all the right opportunities to succeed, are enforced, making sure that every person that attends Akron Public Schools feels that they are accepted, that they are welcome, and that they are part of this community and part of this family. No one should feel that they are having to hide themselves or feel like they have to create a barrier with themselves to learn. One of the most important things is when we look at engagement with students. There's psychological meaningfulness, psychological safety, psychological availability. And when we look at psychological safety, do students have the ability to truly be their authentic self without putting up a barrier or a wall? It's very difficult to learn with if your physical safety is in jeopardy, but also if you're emotional and your mental safety is also in jeopardy. So it's very important that our teachers, our administrators follow the policies we have and make sure that every person, whether it's, they're part of the LGBTQ, whether it's racial, gender, whether it is religious, that every student has the right to be their true authentic self in our buildings.
The DEI policy that we had not only protected those that come from a variety of demographics, it also protected our LGBTQ community, which members of that community do attend school in this district. Not only are there students, but there are adults. And this is where removing our own personal bias is important as a board member. It's because it is our responsibility to not only protect our students, but our employees that come from a variety of different walks of life and a variety of different backgrounds. Whether it's DEI or an equity policy, it is important that something exists that protects this community. That is, that is our responsibility as a board. Regardless of how we feel about it, it is our responsibility to protect this community.
Well, as a member of the LGBT community, I can say I have a little bit of experience in how this works and how the kids are going to be accepted or how they're going to feel when they're there. So I think that I provide a unique lens with that. You know, it's been mentioned about DEI policy and the bigotry that our federal government has done by remaking us, making us remove that policy. The work isn't done just because the name has changed or it's gone. We've got to work on that. It is inclusive of everybody. I want to make sure that I would stand up. I would support having GSAs in our schools, gay student alliances. I would support a relationship with GLSEN, which is an adult organization that works in public schools to make sure there are safe spaces for our students. But we have to make sure, again, it's the whole student, regardless of what you look like or who you love. We have to make sure that our students feel safe, they feel like they can be themselves, and that the, the parents and the teachers and the administrators are all on the same page with that, and we're supporting our students.
Thank you. Ms. Paney would be a part of the board who had to vote in DEI policy. But I would love to be part of the board to vote, create the complete DEI. But again, there were eight, nine, ten, thousands on the table that were at risk for spending a lot of special day in our, running the lunch program, calling accidents, so many more. There have been a factor champagne, coffee, and wine with the IEP. So I had to vote and think, keep that in mind. But when we got to hear a colleague letter, I took the time to go personally visit students, that fire zone and that book, to hear what their perspective was. And they did have concerns, very concerned about their mental barriers coming up. And so I assured them that we already have policy on who will reset, first of all, to care for students, fair, and you know, equitable education. And that is the long form we have been specialized, need for the DEI. We need to enforce and follow what we have. Then as a result, we need to model, not bully people for their life size. Thank you.
The humanitarian work will continue across the board, and all the awesome, we'll be treated the same, and the immense opportunity for education. So just because there is not a specific name for a particular program, there were laws, the federal laws, the state law, already on the books, like the Zillia and certain things, that it will continue for that particular segment group. And also, like, if you like, the thing that she had said, I'm sorry, that I can get said. And also, like you do like the thing that she had said, I'm sorry, that I think it said, we need to just enforce some of the policies that we already have on the board. Thank you. The name of the district is Akron Public Schools. That means we take everyone. And as a result, because we have accept everyone, we treat everyone fairly. There are already laws, I would stop using that acronym of D E I because I think it waters to put the meaning of the term maybe. So I don't, I try to avoid using, because we already have laws. Most people may not realize that that came from the Women's Fair Act, Wage Act. And as a result of that, companies, because it was popular, took it on and made policies based on it. But I say, just let's follow the laws we already have in place. Laws are better than policy anyway. So let's follow the laws. We have disability act laws, we have women's wage fair laws, we have discrimination, against discrimination laws. Let's just follow the laws because we are Akron Public Schools.
Can you repeat that question, please?
Yes. How can you ensure that our faithful population of LGBTQ students will be treated fairly?
We have a lot of laws that protect our citizens, our students. But those are laws on the books. Laws really don't matter if there is nothing in place to make sure that we're following those laws. So the laws are one thing, but the practice is another. If you allow discrimination, you will be discriminated against. Maybe not this time, maybe not next time. I think we have to be intentional, we have to talk to our students, we have to find out what our students need, and we have to protect their rights to be who they are and who we are. So I think the ideal that we would use existing policies, laws, doesn't really matter if we're not intentional about ensuring the rights of everyone. If we allow discrimination in any form, then we will be discriminated against.
Thank you. This goes back to accountability and what you expect, you inspect. We have a nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act that is a federal law. No policy will supersede federal law. But when people are not held accountable to policies and things that's in place, my young counterpart here couldn't have said it any better, that Akron is full of policies. We have an anti-bullying policy. We have in our mission statement for the district, our philosophy of education, that each child will receive the things that they need and be treated fairly. So when you think about each child receiving the things that they need, that's equity without saying D E I. This existed from the nineties. This is nineteen ninety-eight within the board policy right now bylaws. People need to read and then enforce. The problem is we have anti-cell phone laws, and then we have to get yonder bags, not laws, policies. Enforce what you expect, you inspect, and you support it. If it is a policy, if it's a rule that's broken, what is the discipline? So be consistent to what you write. We don't need to write new policies that then we don't enforce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've had several questions concerning Title I, how we can cut the Title I. What is your plan to increase state exam scores? And here's a question I would like to ask the audience, kind of group them together. If you win, what top two measurable indicators will you commit to? Suspension rates, proficiency rates, graduation rates? And how would you publicly report that progress? Just a little bit of time to talk about some of these that may be administratively focused, but there are a lot of questions from the audience about increasing state exam scores and cuts the Title I, those graduation proficiency rates. If you would, just take a minute to answer that. Thank you. And we're going to start with Ms. Kelly. We get the first one. Thank you.
Ms. Davis, that was a long question.
It was a long question. So what top two measurable indicators will you commit to? Suspension rates, proficiency rates, graduation rates, and other rates. What are your top two priorities, I asked that one. What would be your top two priorities if you are elected to oversee this?
This wasn't mentioned, but it is a priority of mine, is increasing parental or guardianship involvement. That is important. Our teachers should be aware of what's going on in the lives of the students that's in their classrooms. Because it's what is in the environment of the homes, or the shelters, or the cars, or the streets that our children are living in, because we do have a large percentage of children that are houseless, that affects how they learn and how they retain information. These things cannot be ignored. That is important to me, to make sure we know what's going on in our children's lives, in our students' lives, so that we can properly equip our classrooms and make sure that our teachers have everything that they need to teach their students.
Sorry. So I think as we look at what our priorities are, the biggest one should be helping the administration continue to implement the four cornerstones of their strategic plan. The plan's a good plan, we just need the right people to help implement it. We need to look at the graduation rate. We all saw the state report card that showed we went from two and a half stars to three and a half stars. I sat in on the superintendent's Community and Business Advisory Committee a week or so ago, and there's some good news coming out in the next quarterly report on that effort in terms of our graduation rate. I think we're going to see it go over ninety percent, so that's great. We can move it up even further. And then we have to make sure that we're looking at that third grade reading readiness. We have to make sure that our children can read at the proper level when they get to the third grade. There's a pilot that the City of Akron and some other community partners are doing to try to do pre-K readiness in the daycare centers to make sure they have the proper skill set, to make sure that we're moving the kids into schools at the right level. But that third grade reading attainment has got to be a priority.
Thank you. So priority is early literacy. Under my leadership, we're able to expand the early learning program to a full-day program. I think that is very important, because the law that we have, our youngest learners in the classroom, the more opportunity we have with them to help improve their literacy score, I know that is one of our lower parts of the national statistics report cards. So I think it's important that we continue with that program. I know there's some criticisms that justify the program unfolding, but we cannot let the perfect become the enemy of the good. So expanding early literacy to full day, and then also creating staffing solutions. There is nationwide teacher shortage. We cannot do our best work if we are constantly concerned about staffing issues. And so I think we need to really focus on how to go about leveraging our staffing better in Akron Public Schools.
Thank you. You know, all of them are important. We are a city, a product of what we produce. But mine would really be at early childhood. I mean, you may proud of that early childhood work, I have been in testimony. I was the first back nineteen sixty-five on a hard afternoon that took early childhood when it first came out. And it gave me the opportunity to graduate with a high school and go ahead and continue with my life. So that's one thing that I would take and be concerned about, some of the suspension and graduation. But we really still need to dive into getting our enrollment and lower grade. There's just a lot of other things that we need to also be concerned about that, you know, we're not discussing these days because we have to get our enrollment in our school building for every guest to survive. Thank you.
Thank you.
At each of these forms that we attended, I've always said, my first priority is about increasing the number of teachers. There is a national teacher shortage. Every district is begging for new teachers. They don't have enough. So how do we create different ways to do it, and one way to be to grow our own teachers? We already have wonderful staff, it may not be certified teachers beneath the petticoats of mass housing. And getting that, where you go through the university act and making that partnership and building our own teachers, that they're already vested. That would be one of the ways. There could be looking at all different ways, but always talking about teachers because there's a direct impact on student achievement, which is the proficiency within a better teacher. And so when you have active teachers, you impact all of these things that we're talking about helps you do that with good instruction. Thank you.
I think the two things that I would look at is literacy and discipline. Those two should go together when we're looking at the graduation rate. If we have not interceded, if we have not intervened with our children who are struggling with literacy, then I think we will always have to manage those groups of students as they would progress through the grades. Discipline, we absolutely need to find a way not only to keep our kids in class, but we also have to acknowledge that we can't let two or three kids hold a whole classroom hostage. So we have to find some kind of effective way to deal with the disciplines in our school, keep the kids in school, but let them know that they need to be accountable for their behavior. And our literacy, I think it's too late when we get to the third grade and we find out a child is not reading at third grade level in the third grade. We can use our community partners, we have Head Start, we have early learning programs.
Definitely discipline academic achievement. Early literacy is important. Again, that's leveraging our community partnerships. Using, we have great relationships with organizations such as the United Way. We do have Head Start programs. But we can look at how can we better leverage this to where in the communities, Boys and Girls Club, where most of these families are at, that we can have reading centers where our community partners, members of the Divine Eye can come and help with those literacy, those foundational blocks before students actually attend school. Additionally, as I stated, what you expect, you inspect. We have to look at the culture and the climate in buildings and look at classroom management and teaching and learning. How is instruction being rendered? There are some teachers that you know are excellent teachers. Those excellent teachers should be the mentor teachers. And then there are some teachers that are not so good teachers. There are some teachers who are not at work. We know about high absenteeism. How are we addressing those issues to then drive, as Wynne has stated, academic excellence? So it's about accountability, expecting, and examining our current practices to get improvement.
Could I get the question again, please?
Yes. If you win, what top two measurable indicators will you commit to? Or what are your top two priorities?
So I've had four main priorities. The first one was financial responsibility. So when we look at a measurable outcome, what I expect to see is a balanced budget coming forward. Because we need to make sure that just as every single person has to manage their finances, so must our district. The second priority was having stability in our leadership. We've had four superintendents in the last five school years. And that's very difficult to accomplish any of these metrics we're talking about, from declining enrollment, whether it's reading scores. When we don't have the right leadership at the top and consistent leadership at the top, it's hard to build that sustainability. So I would like to see sustainability with our superintendent, not going every other year, replacing the superintendent. So those are two commitments I like to make, is make sure we balance our budget and we have stable leadership moving forward as a district.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Janet. I'm going to squeeze just one more before we close. I have to move to the portion of the closing stage, the D E I. It is important, because I've heard community team leadership mentioned several times. This is important, and we'll start with you, Janet? Yes. The question is, what part of your platform demonstrates team building and working together? And then what would you do to restore Akron State, that industry? Talking about team building, what part of your platform? And then what would you do to restore Akron State, that industry? Thank you.
So to me, the students and the families and the educators are part of my team. And my commitment on my platform has been about getting back in the community. I have committed to holding monthly meetings across the clusters in the district, like I did when I was a city councilman, and making sure that I'm there to hear from our families and from our educators as what the needs are. So it's putting that team together and getting back to where we're listening and making sure, there are going to be decisions that everybody doesn't like, and we're going to make people upset. But you're going to hear from me as to an answer to your question. And if you might not like the answer, but I'm going to tell you why I had to make that decision and what factors led me to do that. So it is bringing those people together. I'm known as a collaborator and a facilitator. I've served on multiple community boards. I have a lot of deep-rooted connections in this community, and that's what I want to bring to the table.
As president of the board in twenty twenty-four, I had three good traits to promote team building within the board. I think that's very important, because one teacher, another employee, you have professional development associate board members. I hope we can continue bringing my mentorship myself to the table, understanding my brother's role, getting trained on how to support association, and not, me, over to learn. You have to have that attitude, it was a lifelong learner. If you think you know your thing, then you're not going to learn. The term of restoring faith, this is not news for me. I'm going to continue to be visible in the community. I'm going to continue to listen. I want to continue to visit schools because I think that is very important. And so I think that is what I continue to do. And I thank you.
Thank you. Well, mine would be accountability and training and, you know, everything that some have already said. But this is something that you need to know. I would be a supportive school board member to restore. I urge you, go back and watch board meetings. I've visited board meetings. I've been down there already advocating for two weeks on behalf of my granddaughter. I urge you to please watch the committee meeting, and you will see what really goes on. They're saying they want to counter these transgressions, but that's not it. They want control. You know, there are certain board members that want to be able to control that board members for their agenda. But what may be different here is that I'm a board member. Did you guys know that they get a gift of being everyone, but they still have five hours? If I had a question, I would pick up the phone and call this doctor if I didn't understand something on the agenda. Can you answer this second question for me? Yeah. What part of your platform do you think scheme building and working together? And in the record, what would you do to restore Akron State, that industry? So an effective team starts with different skill sets of everyone. So part of the thing, one of the things I would like to do is that I would like for each of my colleagues, and including myself, is to take a leadership assessment. And in that, you understand everyone's leadership style. And then you know how to respond to it. It's one of the practices that my company does. So whenever I'm working with someone who I may not know or familiar with, I can look at their leadership style assessment and see what things I may bump heads with. Also, it's not just taking the assessment, but being trained on how to use the assessment in our daily lives and how it's taught. Protocols, setting the protocols that we know how to interact with each other. Like Phil, which I proposed two years ago, that we have these school board meetings at the schools so that different parents can see it, and they don't have to worry about going all the way downtown. We can still do something, but at least four of you here should be in different clusters so that we can hear different voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to answer that question backwards. I want to talk about faith in our school system. Faith comes with the transparent, conducting business in a transparent way. I believe that we currently have too many executive sessions, and the public does not know how we come to the decisions that we come to. So first being the transparency. What I bring is myself, and I bring my authentic self. I come to the board prepared. I have read the agendas. I have looked over the contracts. So when I come to the board, I want to discuss these things. And I ask questions so that the public can be informed. the public can be informed about how we get to where we get, how we make the decisions that we make. I want to be a team player, but honestly, I'm not on everyone's team. Uh, right is right and it will always be right. And so when we look at decisions that I don't think are right, then I will stand up and I will say that I don't think this is right. I will say the issues that I would have with it. But when a vote is taken, a vote is taken and I don't have to be on the, on, on number four on every vote, but I do want to come and bring myself and bring transparency through the district.
In regards to team building, I believe that diversity of thought is very important. And with diversity of thought, you have to understand and that respect matters. And just because you may not agree with someone, that does not mean that you should not respect their individual opinion or their thought or the con- their constituency thought that they represent. So the team building factor comes in being patient and respectful while you can still be firm on your positioning, but I think the respect factor is very important. And I believe as my time as the chair, I've been effectively able to na- navigate that the best way I can to bring some continuity and calmness, uh, to this board. Additionally, my platform is student centered and it has always been student centered. And I think it's very important as we get together, when we talk about the continuity, when we talk about team building, that we approach each other from a place of informed intellect and not just of what we think or what someone has shared with us or anonymous information and we deal with it as, as if it's fact. So informed intellect and respect for individuals. Thank you.
So my background has been in leadership development, group dynamics, working with teams across the nation, whether it was California, doing a STEM program or Florida on a sailing expedition, doing leadership development, even to China, working with Chinese students. And what's so essential in team development is leading by example. I can't control the behaviors of my other board members, but I can control my own. I can decide to stay calm, find humor in a situation and most importantly, seek to understand. It's oftentimes in a debate, we are seeking to win and not trying to understand the other person and where they're coming from. No, we're not always going to agree, but there is a concept called healthy conflict. We don't want to move into conformity where we all agree out of fear of what others might say or just to follow along blindly. We don't want blind followership or we want strong followership, strong leadership. And it all comes down to building strong relationships. So we have four votes this election and I hope that I'm one of them. And whoever you vote on this stage, I can commit to working with them in an effective way.
Thank you.
Yes. What part of your platform demonstrates team building? And in the latter, what would you do to restore academic state that in this district?
Before we restore, I can't make up a reason.
I'm sorry. What, if elected, what would you do to restore academic?
Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
My name is Carmen Kelly and I am asking for your support. This board and this district deserves to have their voice always heard at our school board meetings. Not only that, but there are family members in this community that cannot make it to these school board members and they want to be a part of that conversation. I will deliver that message back to them. Not only that, but this community, you have asked for new members on this school board. I have stepped up. I have delivered what you asked, which is somebody new, someone younger with a fresh perspective. You deserve that. This city deserves to have strong, transparent leadership. The status quo must be stopped, completely ended. This city deserves so much more. There is a need for healing and so much hope. And that will not change if the members of this community does not challenge themselves to vote differently. I need you to ask, answer your, your own question and to find the answers to your own thoughts, which is we need somebody different on this school board. We're hearing a lot about being qualified, but if you look at the definition of qualified, you'll also see the word capable. And what this school board has shown us is that they are not capable of making decisions that this community and our children need them to make that will protect district, district, our finances, our educators, and also this community. I have the privilege of being endorsed by almost 3,000 teachers, the AEA, the Freedom Block, the Summit County Progressive Dams and the Young Dams.
Thank you. Mr. Jerome?
Everything rises and falls on leadership. That's a quote by John Maxwell and that's what I bring to this board is extensive background of not just leadership theory, but also in leadership practice from the international background, but also in the premise of the best leaders work out, go and make other leaders. And I'm so thrilled with our district where there are so many challenges in our community and we have so many bright young scholars and students who are going to make wonderful contributions to our community, to our county and to our country. And as being a part of the school board to help make sure that our students have the resources they deserve, that they have the support they deserve, that they have a school board that reflects their interests. And so when I look at the current board situation, one, make sure we address four things, four priorities in mind, where making sure we balance our budget and be more fiscally responsible, making sure we have stability in our leadership, making sure that we better partner with our community. There are wonderful nonprofit organizations and businesses who do wonderful work, whether it's to help support mental health resources, enrichment programs, after school programs, sporting programs that help make our students' lives better. And we want to make sure we expand and support those partners even better. And then of course, the last one is making sure that our students and our staff feels safe in our buildings. And so you can go to my website at NathanJerose.com. I do have over 20 endorsements as well from the various organizations and even community leaders. You're welcome to check those out. But I want to thank you again for your time today and thank you for being involved because these decisions matter. Who is on our school board? And I really hope you can sit, have your support in this election. I mentioned earlier, you get four votes and it's up to you to create the next team of the Akron Public School Board. And whoever you put into your top three or top four, I hope to be included because we need collaborators, we need servant leadership, and that's what I bring to the board. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. This is a Bible in proverb, the axe forgets, the axe forgets, but the tree remembers. The reason why that's important because I made a statement at the last rhetoric that's being thrown around here today and some you may have received in text messages. But here's the deal, you also know a tree by its fruit. I've been in this community all my life. I've been trained K through 12 through Akron Public Schools. Who I am is who I am, not who people try to frame me up to be. I'm a member of this community. If some of the allegations were real, then it would be easy to find an actual living person to substantiate those things. What you can clarify and what can be proven and what you can find actionable, um, items concerning is Carla Jackson as an educator. Carla Jackson, that a woman of bold faith that I'm unapologetic about. You will see a servant leader that's been serving this community before I set in this seat. A voice for the voiceless, a person that's unbought, unbossed, indefinitely unbullied. See, I believe in informed intellect and I believe that the people of Akron are wise. And I believe that there's more soldiers than there are sheep. So I believe that when you hear certain rhetoric and certain things, that you have to use your informed intellect to ask, why would someone such as Gwen Bryant, a 30-year educator with Akron Public Schools not be endorsed by that education association? Now ask yourself, why would I, Carla Jackson, an able-bodied educator, degreed in education, licensed educator, PhD in organizational leadership, not be supported by a community and things become a partisan issue for non-partisanship? You need people that will speak truth to power. I've always been that and I've never compromised that and I will not start. I'm Carla Jackson and I do this now.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, audience, we're going to go home. We're going to let this person speak. I appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Harrison, Reverend Rick Harrison, and I'm asking for your vote for Akron School Board. There are two endorsements that I'm proud to have. I am proud to have the, uh, 2,700 Akron Educator, uh, endorsement, the teachers. I'm proud to have Freedom Block's endorsement because they represent the teachers and the community. I have labored in this community for over 40 years. I've put work in this community. I've been down to school board meetings for the last 10 years. I may not, uh, be the longest tenured board member up here, but I've been to more board meetings than anyone that's sitting up here because I care about this community. I'm not saying, I don't want to say I, 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 but I do want to serve the students of Akron Public Schools. I do want to serve the community. I do believe that we have to be fiscally responsible in our district. I do believe that we have to do some things different. Education is different and it's different because we have different challenges and we have to own those challenges and we have to meet them. I'm asking for your vote to be on the school board because I think together we can achieve some great things. I do not agree with a lot of things that have happened over the last year, um, as I have been at school board meetings, but I have worked to mitigate, um, things. I have worked to be respectful in board meetings. I have worked to make sure that whatever decision is made, that we can, we work with it with the best interest of our students. I'm asking for your vote to be on the school board because I think Akron deserves more and we can achieve more. Our kids deserve more. Our kids can learn, but we have to put them in the right position to learn. I'm asking for your vote because I want to be a champion of our students and this community. I want to thank you for listening tonight and I ask that you would vote for Gregory B. Harrison on the ballot. I ask for your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
I mentioned, uh, at another forum that I am fearful for this school district. And the reason for that is my work as a national consultant. When we go into school districts, we first look at the system of leadership. School districts have different systems. The first one is leadership. If effective leadership isn't happening, the rest of it doesn't work as well. So this, this board represents the leadership of Akron. I haven't been to as many school board meetings as he has, but look, I've spent more days in APS than anybody on this board, on this panel. So I know about this school district. So I am fearful because if we don't get it right this time, Akron School District may not be as great as it can be. So experience, experience and leadership matter. I don't care about any of the other things that's being said or how one's being endorsed. I was endorsed by the mayor. I just didn't mention it. But experience and leadership matters. I'm running for this school district because I've worked in it. I care about it. I care about this community and I want this school district to be the great district it has the capabilities to be. Thank you, Akron, for coming and listening and wanting to know more about the candidates that you're going to vote for in three weeks. Experience and leadership matters. This is about education, not all this other stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
My name is Cynthia Blake and I have ran for other positions because I really wanted to be a part of the county government, but that didn't work out for me. I ran for the school position, you know, because it had to involve a situation with my granddaughter. I'm not using this school board position as a stepping stone, as it has been done in the past. I have truly been an advocate in our community, especially for the children. I worked in Tiredown, I've worked in Pee Wee, I've worked in various organizations to raise money for scholarships. I work as a PTA. I've worked very heavily in Buckto Cluster and on the, uh, west side of Akron and various organizations. As you can see and you can tell, they have turned this race, which is a nonpartisan race by law, into a political cesspool. Nowhere has it ever been done for a board member to send out advertisement or campaign against their other sitting board members. That's never been done in the history of Akron. And I am a super voter where I don't have missed an election since I've been able to vote at 18. I've also been involved with, um, in other areas where they're telling us right now redistricting is important only because it's being told. But when I was advocating for it in October of 2021, couldn't get any traction. So I need our community to change our voting behavior because they want us to pick a side, red or blue, for our children. Our children belong to the universe. They don't belong to a party. I bleed children and that's what you should look at. You should evaluate the people, the individuals, and not make it a party line as they are trying to make it because they want control over it just to pick, to be who the next school board president. And yeah, I said it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Now we'll hear from Ms. Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am Diana Otry. As I've already stated, my life's work has been about service to children, to families, to community as a mother, a grandmother, a PTA leader and a registered nurse. 15,000 hours to the Akron Public Schools. I've listened, I've heard from many and that informs all of my decisions. And so leadership, I stepped into it when it was not easy. I stepped into it and I stood alone on the levee. That was a good decision. I stood alone when it came to our sports, but I also know how to work as a team, as I helped guide this district as part of the team through COVID. And I'm proud of how this district navigated COVID and I'm proud of the teachers who developed a new way of delivering education. And although I wasn't endorsed by the AEA leadership, its members know me. I would like to ask for your vote because I want to continue working on behalf of our students on things such as the early learning program, making sure our strategic plan is carried out, building on the improvement to our CLCs, which in fact- building on the improvement to our CLCs, which in fact was a paper process before I came to this board. It is now an electronic process and is more affordable for community members as a result of my advocacy. I want to continue programs such as the SOL program, Safety Around Water, because 80% of African-American students cannot swim. That is a program that I advocated for. I've advocated for sports facilities and you can look at behind the backyard of my alma mater, Buto High School, that has turf as a result of my advocacy, in addition to working with this superintendent, Christine Fowler-Mack. The track over at East. And I want to continue advocating for sports equity in our district and many other things. If your candidate that you prefer has children at the center, then I am your candidate. Vote Diana Otry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Audience, please, please give the candidates a round of applause. And I also want to thank you, audience, for being an attentive, respectful, attentive, respectful audience tonight. Thank you to all of the candidates for participating. We're not quite done, folks, so you can hold on just for a moment. Thank you to everyone who joined. Please help me thank Sky for helping us moderate. To learn more about the candidates' positions, please visit vote411.org. This forum has been recorded by the League of Women Voters and will be posted online. Remember to check your ballot dates and cast your vote. We thank the Maine Library for hosting us and we invite you to continue the conversation with the candidates at the tables outside. At this time, we're not quite done. We're going to bring up a couple of presentations. Two minutes, two minutes. I'm going to turn the program back over to our presentation, our presenters. Thank you for the opportunity to moderate this forum tonight. I am a proud of the Akron Public Schools. I live in this community and this is important to me as well. And I know it is to me as well. So at this time, right now, if you would just lend your attention to Amy Goodland, speaking in support of Issue One, Manager of Communications, County of Summit ADM Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. We really appreciate it. But I really want to start by thanking the candidates this evening because as I sat here, I heard every one of them in some way, shape, or form address the fact that mental health is critical to our children's success. And at the ADM Board, we believe that mental health care is health care. You are here tonight because you care about the youth of this community and about Akron and Summit County. I am here on behalf of the Summit County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Board, Executive Director Amy Wade, asking for your consideration to vote yes for Issue One. You talk about the future here tonight. You talk about our youth and their needs. We partner with Case Western and Summit County Public Health to do a youth risk, uh, youth risk behavior survey. What that survey has shown us is that mental health concerns and challenges are increasing among our children in as young as middle school ages. They are indicating that that is the area in which they feel like they need the most support and help. We fund agencies such as Red Oak that are in our schools who provide prevention and support to children and their families. Places like Greenleaf, Child Guidance and Family Services, Akron Humidaw. These organizations are part of what we call our Circle of Hope. And when you vote yes on Issue One, you're saying these things matter to you and to our school district and to our community as a whole. Right now, we are heading to ask our constituents to consider a moderate, very miniscule increase. We have not asked for an increase in our levy in 18 years. We're asking for an increase that will go from 2.95 mil to 3.45 mil, which equates to $6.25 per month for our home valued, assessed value at $100,000. These critical services that we are able to provide are allowing us to step in the gaps that we know are already there, but also to plan. We all know this is a very tenuous time and our landscape. And we are looking forward to the ways in which we can continue to support our community for things like the Medicaid rollbacks that we are seeing threatened right now. With your help at the ballots in November or right now through early voting as well, we will be better positioned to help the people of Summit County, regardless of their insurance status and regardless of their ability to pay. Again, tonight, we are here to just ask for your consideration to vote yes for Issue One and to vote yes to help support mental health across Summit County.
Thank you, Amy. And at this time, Rachel Madigan from Summit County Executive's Office is going to talk to us about supporting Issue Number Two.
Okay, hello. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Rachel Madigan. I work for County Executive Eileen Shapiro's Office of Administration and Public Information. Before I get in to Issue Two, I want to start a little bit about some context you need to know about it. So Issue Two is a proposed charter amendment that will be on your ballot this fall. So we, um, we are definitely constantly hearing from our residents that it is unquestionable that homeowners across Ohio are feeling the burden of inflation and higher living costs as property tax bills increase. But as a response to these concerns and the real threat of a constitutional amendment to abolish all property taxes, the Ohio General Assembly in Columbus sought to eliminate a specific type of property tax that's called inside village. So your property taxes can be categorized into two different ways, inside village and outside village. And that's just what it's called, so take a ride with me here. So outside village is everything that you vote on that appears on your ballot outright. So Issue One, which we're hoping you support as well, the ADM levy, Summit DD levy, school bond issues, school levy issues, everything that you vote on on your ballot, that is called outside village and that will not increase proportionally with your value. So inside village, what we're going to be talking about, you can think of as the baseline for your property taxes, funding your government. So that cities, villages, townships, counties, school districts, Akron Public Schools has about 4.2 mils in inside village. So there's a very limited amount. Only 10 mils can be levied as inside village. And this portion of your property tax bill, it does rise proportionally with your property value. So that means if your property value increases 30%, the inside village portion of your bill will also go up 30%. The rest of it will not, but for the inside village, it will. So Issue Two relates to a very small portion of your property tax bill, so it's 2.2 mils to be exact. So this is the amount of village that's collected by the Summit County Government to fund our general fund. And our county general fund primarily pays for public safety services. So this includes your 911 dispatchers, the sheriff's office, the county jail, our sheriff's patrols, felony prosecutors, our court staff at the courthouse, and more. It's a very small portion of your personal tax bill. For instance, so I'm a renter in Akron, so it's 3% of my landlord's bill. But altogether, it adds up to 41 mil, over $41 million for the county to pay for these public safety services. So when the state tried to eliminate inside village earlier this year, that immediately would put us $41 million into the hole, unable to provide the services as you expect us to do today. So hearing these concerns from our residents about rising costs and affordability and wanting to avoid these unintended consequences from some of the state's proposed actions, Issue Two is the county's effort to control its own destiny. Issue Two seeks to protect taxpayers by limiting the growth of our 2.2 mils, our portion that we collect for our county government, so not your entire property tax bill, but our portion, our 2.2 mils, capping that growth at a maximum of 3% annually. So if your property tax, if your property value, excuse me, if your property value increases by 20 or 30%, which we've seen and we continue to expect with the next reappraisal next year, our portion of your tax bill, just our 2.2 mils, won't grow by 20 or 30% as it would now. It would be capped at 3% annually. So while it's a small portion of your bill, it's a large concession that the county's making with current estimates that the county would be collecting $8 million less next year if we see these double-digit valuation increases again. So, and because Issue Two would be passed by the voters of Summit County, oh, I'm so sorry. I thought, I was getting, I had to cut off my time. Because Issue Two would be passed by the voters of Summit County and not given through the state, our charter would protect us from these potential state actions that might leave us unable to provide these services. So in conclusion, we urge you to support Issue Two and vote yes on your ballot. And it would limit increases from our portion of, our Summit County's portion of property taxes and protects these public safety services so that when you call 911, you don't hear, 911, please hold, because someone will actually answer your call. So we have handouts. We'll be here afterwards if anyone has any questions. We understand it's a really convoluted issue and I just threw this at you right after this forum. So thank you for allowing me to provide some info. And I also just wanted to say, if anybody is planning to early vote and hasn't yet, the County Board of Elections has moved to 1050 East Talmadge Avenue. So don't get caught going to Grant Street. Make sure you go to the right place if you're early voting. Thank you so much.
At this time, please welcome Ron Lamons and Dr. Vodisak.
Thank you so much. First, we want to say that we would like to thank our candidates. You did a great job, every single one of you. This is one of the few forums that actually had an Akron Public Schools scholar as a co-moderator. So I really would like to thank literally the partnership. That's the reason, scholars cannot vote, but it is our fundamental right as a citizen to exercise that right to vote. And make sure you take your family with you. At the conclusion, our candidates are going to be outside to answer more intimate questions for you. And we have a gift, a token of appreciation. Be sure also to get, there's a petition, outside voter, education mobilization, registration, documentation, faculty, ballots, to ensure that your family has all the resources. But we would like to extend a small token to our moderators on tonight, and that is Mrs. Carla Davis.
Thank you.
Who did a wonderful job. An Akron Public Schools scholar, a scholar to send.
Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you for your attentiveness and coming out to today's forum. On behalf of the committee and the planning committee, so in the first, let me also extend our appreciation and thank you all who put you out, who worked to put this together. There's a lot of conversation and things went on and thank you so much for this, for creating this opportunity for the public and for us to learn. To candidates, again, thank you for your answers and thoughtfulness and frankly, your willingness and bravery to, to, to do the, the public service, right? Uh, we often will talk about our elected officials, but few of us take the time to actually do the work and, and be brave enough to step up, so we appreciate that. And to the audience, you've given us plenty of questions. So many that, that we tried to go through and, and, and create some meaningful questions based upon what you gave us. So to the candidates, there's a lot of stuff up here for you to, to take a look at if you'd like. We'll make these available to you. We will do our best to process and probably create some kind of document or something like that that will allow you, so you can see where your questions are, where your questions are. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Candidates will be available for additional questions. And library closes at ADM. You don't have to go home.